I want to welcome everyone to our March School Board meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask one of our students, Lane Park, if he would open us in a word of prayer and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we stand with this day, Lord, and thank you for letting us all gather here tonight, Lord, to go over stuff, to go over school stuff, Lord. Oh, we thank you everything that you done for us, Lord. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lane. Next on our agenda are our consent items consisting of the agenda, the minutes of the February 9th, 2021 meeting, policy for revision, BCAV, regular board meetings, and policies for deletion, BBF Advisory Committee, JDD, suspensions and expulsions in school suspension program.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent items.
All right, we have a motion to accept the consent items. Ms. Reese, have a second. Mr. Hytman, all in favor? Unites. We had no public participation, and so now we're going to recognize our Young Georgia Authors.
Each year, the, there's a competition, each grade level, for our, to select our system winners. Knowing they will come to the board meeting, but just kind of come and win, ask them not to come. We will honor them at their individual schools with their gift certificate, with their certificate and gift card. So, for kindergarten, we had Kansas Corey, her story, My Friend, Kansas Corey in kindergarten. In first grade, Brennan Cook, his short story, If I Hand $100, I Would. Chicken necks, honey mustard, and then Alaska, so it's almost person. Second grade, Cornelius McDowell, he wrote about his fun time at the fair. Next, my mom covered her eyes, and when we got in, she let go. Almost fell back. Where do you think we were? We were at the fair. It's a surprise visit to the fair. Third grade, Larson Turner, Back in the Time, Saving D-Day. The next morning, me and Lucas finished this crazy project, then we thought about where to go. We just walked through it. The next thing we know, it is, is that we are in our twenties. Asked the guy named Lucas and me, what is the date? He said, June 6, 1944. Then I noticed we were being shot at on a boat. Again, these are just excerpts from the students' short stories, poems, and essays. Fourth grade, we had Lily Bradford, Little Star. Once upon a time, a little star was born. When the star was first born, his friends took one look at him and said, "You're too little. Leave us alone and play with your tiny moon rocks or something, you baby." This made the little star sad, but little did the star know that he was quite indeed special. In fifth grade, Katie Crenshaw, The Adventures of Kai Akari. It was a smoldering hot day in Tokyo, Japan. A flight was headed from Tokyo to Okinawa when a horrible disaster struck. Kai Akari was on board Flight 72543, a Boeing 737, when he heard a faint rumbling in the distance. Sixth grade, Janaya Norming, Suspicious Door. Story, "Why is that door always locked?" Said Julian. Every day, when I walk into my fourth class, me and my classmates always pass a locked door. The more we walk past the door, the more spooky this gets. Seventh grade, Book in the C grades, Choices. Recently, in my LA class, we read an article titled, "That Was About Making Choices." The author asked these students, "If we could have one superpower, what would it be?" Many students responded with, "For like Superman, lightning speed like Batman, and even strength like Luke Cage," but the superpower that the author chose really stood out to me. The author chose the power of choice. The power of choice reflects who you are as a person to the world. Eighth grade, Hannah Norman, Night Changes. Now, I'm currently in a hospital bed because I had a severe panic attack. Why wouldn't I be? I watched my best friend fall off a bridge. My life will never, ever be the same. It is all my fault, so never, ever take the people you love for granted, because you never know when they will leave you. Ninth grade, Piper Buller, My Dear Highwayman. I know that these are the last moments, but I have no other choice. I can take one last breath, shed one last tear, and take one last look at my love. This is it. I have to do this now. At least I get to see my dear highwayman on my way out. Tenth grade, Leslie Turnbull, who, since I've been in this position, I think Leslie probably has won it. This may be her third time, and I've been here four years, so she's quite often a winner of this. So, I think this, I know of her third time winning. Tenth grade, Blink of an Eye. Something was watching me. I could feel it. A cold breeze from my fans circled around my shivering body, causing me to grope my blankets tighter. It was the middle of the night. Why was I awake? And eleventh grade, Charlotte Hotnick, Paying My News to Old Scratch. The devil had a wicked grin on his face, and he spoke in a low, gruff voice. Tom, you're come for. I cowered in the doorway, but I knew that there was no escape. Full of regret for the fateful deal I had made, I faced the reality of my impending internal torment. Twelfth grade, Reginald Reed, The Plan 223. We needed help getting all this done, so we called in a couple of people. This was the biggest mistake, letting outsiders in on our hustle. And these students, their submission was submitted last week to, well, February 26th, to the RISA, where they're competing in the district, the CSRA competition. Hopefully, they'll win and advance to state, and we'll know by March 26th if any of our students are winners. We did not have an opportunity last year, because it was right in school let out. So, next week, we'll, we'll bring things for the last, last year's winners. We'll, we'll do the same thing with them, their presentation, because they didn't get theirs last year due to we closed down the school. So, those are our Young Georgia Author winners that these students participated in. So, we'll celebrate them in elementary school on a news show, high school, middle school, most of it with announcements and different things, so we can do that and still be safe with COVID protocols.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the financials. Ms. Puffer.
All right, we are at 66.66% of our fiscal year complete. You can see, first up is our revenues. Taxes are there at about 86%. Overall, revenues are at 75.5%, so we're over on our revenues at this point in the, in the year, which is a good place to be. Our expenditures, we're 61.75%, so you can see we're under on all of our categories of expenditures, so that also is a good thing. On the balance sheet, we have about 3.8 million in cash in the bank, and our fund equity is at 2.964. So, everything is looking good as far as the general fund, staying within our budget. On the SPOS fund, we collected 66,8435. So, you can see we have stayed above our budgeted amount. We actually, if we collect at around that level in March, we will have our $600,000 that we put in the budget and still have three more months of the year. So, the SPOS does do it quite well. On our SPOS summary, you can see we have a balance in the SPOS account of 509,26672. And with our bond afterlorm tax of 985,28901, we have available for the bond payment That payment is due April 1st. I'll pay it on March 31st. They like to have it in one day early, and that's the 1.141,86250. So, we'll still have, excuse me, about 350,000 in that account once I make that bond payment. So, we have done well as far as our bond collections this year. On our capital projects, no change there. We still got 52,000 that is available for the project. We also have the principal's accounts this month. Elementary school, they started out with 30,54497, ended the quarter with 27,85544. And these are through December. We report these on a quarterly basis. The middle school, 61,19779, beginning and ending is 58,10563. At the high school activities, the principal's accounts, that's 45,19303, beginning balance, and 43,33609, ending balance. And in the athletics, 31,82760, 48,07603, ended in December. Any questions on those financials? I do have the amended budget that I'd like for y'all to approve, if you will. What I did with this, and this is not going to be the final. We're still changing grants. We still don't have all the information about some of the grants that we're getting, but I knew we wanted to go ahead and get the impact aid revenue in there and, and get some of these changes to the grants that have already been approved for the federal and state. And we have an estimate on what our midterm, midterm adjustment will be to our QBE. They have not sent out the final allotment sheets, but they're usually pretty close to the estimate. So, you can see we got 368,790 more in the midterm. The governor, whoever announces these things, said they gave back about 60% of the cut that they gave us last year. So, so we did get some money back in the midterm. We adjusted some grants. That was about 5,000. I increased the blood control revenue to match what we received. And we did have the 244,295 of impact date. And you can see, employee replacements and the transfer to pre-K are not impact date. Everything else there adds up to the 244,295 plus the blood control. So, we use that mainly for Chromebooks. We're trying to replace the Chromebooks at the elementary school and the middle school, and with hopes of doing the high school next year. The other adjustments were things that we needed to add to the budget as we saw things that happened. Just an example, increasing repairs and maintenance for the superintendent's office. We had some problems with the mortar lines here and had to do some extra work that was not expected. So, so we're adjusting for those. We are adding some money to the capital projects. You saw we had about 50,000 there. We're asking to add another 40,000 in hopes of starting to build that up. We are planning to apply for a grant with the state for facilities to replace HVACs, and in order to do that, we have to provide a local share. And so, we're trying to build that money up a little bit each year to get ready for that. That won't be until, I think, 2020, 2030, but, but we have to start planning for that now. So, having done that, that will lead, will give us the second page, which is the tentative amended budget. And you can see that now we have, where before we had an estimated ending fund balance of 703,702, now we have 1,156,630. So, that makes me feel a little more comfortable as far as our fund balance and the general fund. So, all of these changes, as far as the grants, like I said, have already been approved, but we're still getting things daily about where they're changing federal grants and state grant amounts. So, there will definitely be another change to this, but this will at least get us to where we are today.
And that'll pull us back to 15?
I'm sorry?
The percentage over?
Well, if we don't spend everything.
Yes, ma'am. The, the reason I bring up 15 is 15 is the, the mark that the auditors use, that if you have a balance over 15%, they fuss at you, and they don't really give you a finding, but they fuss at you because you're not supposed to keep a whole bunch of money and just hoard it. You're supposed to use it and spend it. And once we get close to 15, usually Kelly, the girl that does, or that's over all the audits, usually touches Kay on the shoulder and says, "You're at that 15 mark again," but she does that every year, so.
And, and they have actually admitted that, given the times, if we go up to 20%, they understand that we're trying to save some back for these adjustments like the state did this year. So, you know, they understand that that's, that's why we're trying to be conservative in it and keep, keep a little fund balance there for those emergencies. You don't want to get down too low and then not have anything. But our policy says we go between 10 and 15%.
Any questions on the amended budget? Okay, you need a motion to accept the amended budget?
I'll make a motion to accept the amended budget.
Motion by Mr. Madison, have a second, from Ms. Barstow. All in favor?
While we're on financials, been talking about our audit. I sat in on our audit last week, I guess it was?
Yes, sir.
Maybe two weeks ago. And once again, Ms. Kay and all of her team did a great job. There was no findings for our system, and that is a very good thing for us. We thank you.
You didn't talk about the deal that she's staying another five years.
We didn't. I was hoping we'd have one, at least one finding. She had agreed. We did not have that finding, so she is released.
Next on the agenda is District Legislative Delegate and Alternate.
We had a, a bit of a conversation in regards to Legislative Delegate and Alternate at our last meeting. As we remember, Mr. Madison was unfortunately shortchanged last year, was not able to go to Savannah due to coronavirus. This year, that meeting is the 10th through the 12th of June. We were hoping that we would get someone to volunteer to be the delegate or the alternate, and we did receive that. Mr. Hytman has volunteered. And our illustrious leader has made the recommendation that both gentlemen go this year. After talking with GSBA, they are going to provide a two-for-one deal for the initiation to get in, or the cost to get in.
Registration.
Registration. Thank you. So, it's not going to cost us anymore, but I am recommending that both gentlemen go, and, and they did say that they were both willing to go. So, if that hasn't changed, I would make that recommendation that both gentlemen go and attend the District Legislative Delegate for GSBA in June, on June 10th through the 12th.
And you did say that it was just going to be the same cost for both of them to go?
Yes, because she offered us the two-for-one deal. In the past, that would have never been an issue.
Okay, I make a motion that we, because we have to designate one, the delegate and one, the alternate. I make a motion that we designate Chris Hytman as the delegate and Jim Madison as the alternate, and send them both to the GSBA conference in June.
Second motion.
Okay, have a second, from Ms. Barstow. All in favor?
Do we vote on that?
Thank you, guys.
It surprised me. It's done now. Thank you.
Did I, did I say it back?
Yeah, but we didn't vote, so that's good.
That's what you said, I thought.
That's great.
Okay.
We came back up.
Y'all will both be there. You check on each other, make sure they're both voting. And, and we will have those, actually, just speaking of that, they should send the--
I just want the priorities.
The priorities out in--
Out of both, then.
Right.
Yeah, and then we will--
We'll discuss it, and we'll tell you guys, as a group of six, we'll discuss it, and then the board will decide. This is our priority. So, when you get to number two, you vote yes or you vote no. It's really that simple. We can have it right in front of you. It's not a challenge of a memory game, but it's they are voting for the whole board.
Okay, next on our agenda is the discipline report.
I was asked at the last meeting to present a, a discipline report, and the discipline report that I've put together is based on annual. Instead of trying to go month by month, which got extremely confusing and very long, I'm going to do it by school and by year. I broke it down by the offense, and I broke it down by the, by the year so that everybody can understand it. Now, there's no student names in here, and that was intentional, obviously. But if you go to, go on down, Michael. Keep going. There's, okay, this is FY19, and this is just the elementary. This is for the entire FY19 school year. You see there at the bottom, where you've got all of those different events on the bottom, all of those different referrals. There's a teacher referral, there's a bus conduct referral, there's a bus contact NS. NS means not state. That's an obvious question. NS means not state. There's a certain style of referral that is required to be reported to the state. There's a number of them that are not, and that we handle them locally. However, you have NS on classroom disruption, you have NS on defiance and willful refusal. All of those are state-required, state-reported for our CCRPI. The others are not, which could be anything from bringing a first grader in and talking to him and helping him understand that he needs to stay in his seat, to telling a high school student to quit picking on an elementary kid, whatever it is. Most of those are NS. They're not reportable to the state, but I wanted to show you everything. On the left-hand side, where it says number of events, you can see the number of events in the elementary throughout the entire year for bus conduct NS, which is a smaller stuff, as we said, is about 63, 64, because that just goes up 20, 40, 60, 80. The next one close is a classroom disruption NS. That's under 40. You go way over on the far right-hand side, student civility, incivility, I apologize, NS. That could be anything from profanity to teasing other kids. Typical stuff that happens in school, we have to deal with it and try and make sure that it doesn't continue to happen and get out of hand and be worse. But these are numbers for the year in the elementary school. You can see that they're very small. Michael, if you'll go to the next slide.
But--
Go ahead.
Most of the problems on the bus, then?
For that particular year, it was.
Okay.
On that particular year, yes, sir, it was, as far as the number of referrals for that year. As you go to--
And these can, I mean, the same student can have multiple referrals.
Absolutely. I, I was going to show that here in the next thing. This is referrals by student. So, again, there's no student names here, but there's 115 total students across the bottom. So, you could have, as an example, if you look in the center, the tallest one is a nine. That one right there. The one right next to it, to the right, is also a nine. So, that's nine referrals that student got in that year. Some of those were buses, some of those were classroom. The next one down is seven, and you see there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 1, 2, 3, 4, 7. And then there's below, 6, 5, and you see a whole bunch that are literally just one. That's 115 kids out of 530 to 550 children that got a referral that year. Now, that's a whole school year. That's not that month. That's a whole school year. 115 out of 550, 570 children, and that's the year FY19 at the elementary only. Now, Michael, if you will, move down, please. Go to the middle school. The same exec-- I'm sorry.
So, FY19 was two years ago, actually. Is that right? Mm-hmm. Okay, all right.
Yeah, because we're in FY21.
Yeah.
See, you go across the bottom, and you got the same exact setup as far as the events. Teacher referral, alter, or attendance referral, bus referral, et cetera, across the bottom. And you can see the number of events and what that particular offense was. As you look at electronic violation, we all know what that is. That's phones. That's one of the highest ones. The other one is student incivility. Believe it or not, in the middle school, they tease each other sometimes, and sometimes they use inappropriate words. That's what that's from. You also see tardy is on there. That's a pretty high one for the whole school would be, what, about 23? About 23. So, those are the types of referrals we're talking about that are the largest. You see classroom disruption on the far left is about 16, 17. That's all of the middle school in FY19. As you move down, Michael, you will look at, one student on the far right had 14 of those. One student had 14 of those. Now, there's only 71 here out of the whole middle school. There's only 71 for that year. But one of those students had 14. The next one down is 10, and then you drop down into the sevens and sixes. And as I told you before, when we were talking about this, about 1% of the children create the majority of the offenses. But across the bottom, that's 71 total children, and you see a lot of those are just one. As you move down to high school, you see attendance-related. That would be tardies and attendance-related issues. That would be all the way up to 120 events in the high school in FY19. Attendance-related for not reported to the state would be 40. And then you see all of the other issues across there are very small, less than 20. Michael, move on up to students. You see one student at the high school in FY19 had 20. Another student at the high school had 13. Move over to the right, the next one up would be 12, and then the rest are all below 10. Now, that's 38 students across the bottom for the entire FY19 school year. Now, that one, we can blame on Dr. Gumby, but that's all the way across, that's only 38 in the high school. That's very, very little for a high school of 315, 320 at the time.
How many you say, 38?
38 children. So, you move down to FY20, all of last year. This goes back to the elementary school in FY20. You see on the left-hand side, you got misconduct. There's only 12 here. You look at classroom disruption, you've got 14. Classroom disruptions, um, NS are state-reported, and that's 10. So, again, those are the major ones, classroom disruption and bus. You move down to elementary school referrals for FY20 by student. This is 99 children. Wait, not 50, not 50. That's 71 children, 71 children for FY20. You see that you've got 12, two children at 12, you've got two children at 11. The next one down is three of them at 8, and that's 71 children. This is a middle school, same arrangement. You see the major issue is, in this one, disrespect, which would be 33. And then classroom disruption would be about 21 at the middle school. Move on down to student, if you would, Michael. Middle school in FY20, that's 89 children across the bottom there. 89 children, and you can see one of them had eight, one of them had seven, two of them had seven, I'm sorry. Three of them had six, and it just goes down from there. Again, about 1% of the kids create the issues. As you go to high school, you see tardy is the biggest issue. Classroom disruption is about 21, 22. Tardy is about 65, 68. You go down to the number of high school student referrals. You've got 65 children across the bottom. You've got 15, 8, and probably 17 on that far left. And then the next one down would be 12, and then 10 and below. Okay, now, this is FY21, the year we're in. Now, please understand that there's a gap in there because the children weren't in school. So, it's, it's going to be a little skewed, but I didn't want to not show you the numbers. Bus misconduct, we're looking at 13 for the elementary school. Classroom disruption, 14. And the next one down would be classroom disruption state-reported, which is 10. You move down to elementary school student referrals. One student had 12. One student had seven, and one had six. And this is 38 children at the elementary school created this. Again, it's a short-term year, and we get that, but I just want to share it with you. If you move down to the middle school, electronic violation again. You're looking at telephones. Number six, I'm sorry, at six events, you're looking at disruption or disrespect. And then tardiness again at the middle school. At the middle school, you're looking at thirty-one children and one child, one child had six. Another one had five, then four, and the rest are lower than that. High school referrals. Tardy kinda sticks out like a sore thumb there, doesn't it? The others are quite small. And then you turn and look at the children, this is sixty-seven children. But you look at, three of them have nine, one of them has eight. One of them has seven and then it's six and below. More than likely from the chart we saw before, those are tardies. As you look at just buses for FY twenty-one, that's the year we're in.
One question. What was the total students for high school?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven.
For, that's for year FY twenty-one.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Elementary school FY twenty-one, bus referrals, elementary school thirteen, bus misconduct and three in bus misconduct reported to the state. You look at number of children, you can count those. That's very small. One child had three, two children had two, and then the others were at one. Moving down to middle school, bus referrals was one. High school, bus referrals, um, state-reported was three. Not-state-reported was two. It was a grand total of five children. Now, again, those are not bad numbers. Those are not excessive numbers by any means. But I wanted to show you where we were at over the past three years on referrals as well as bus referrals. Now, another question that was asked in the conversation was what about corporal punishment? Why don't we do that? Can we do that? Should we do that? Should we entertain that? I pulled up corporal punishment in the Georgia Code twenty-dash-two-dash-seven-thirty-one. Provides legal direction of when and how corporal punishment may be administered. Shall not be excessive or unduly severe. Shall never be used as the first line of punishment for misbehavior. The first one is where the lawyers make their money. What is excessive? What is unduly severe? Administered in the presence of a principal or assistant principal authorizing such punishment and informed beforehand in the presence of the pupil of the reason for the punishment. And you can read the rest of it. I don't wanna just read it to you. I know you all can read. I contacted Harbin Hartley, who is our legal counsel. In contacting Harbin Hartley, I talked with Corey Kirby, who is, we usually talk to Corey and use Corey. His response in writing was, "The use of corporal punishment can be extremely polarizing and is often the impetus of litigation. If the principal, assistant principal, or designee does not one hundred percent follow the statutory requirements, that employee administering the corporal punishment could be subject to civil action and potential criminal action. The trend in public education has moved away from corporal punishment and towards PBIS. I would strongly suggest that you reach out to your insurance provider to see if such activities would be covered." So I did that. I contacted our insurance provider who has now tried it. You remember in January, we switched insurance companies. Tried it under Commercial General Liability Coverage Policy Exclusion A of Paragraph Two Exclusions. It says, "A bodily injury or property injury expected from intended from the standpoint of the insurer, this exclusion does not apply to bodily injury resulting from" the first one and the second one is corporal punishment. So we are excluded from being covered by our insurance if we use corporal punishment. And I showed this to Corey and sent it to him first, so I let him interpret it. This is not my interpretation. So we are excluded from insurance coverage if we perform corporal punishment. So all I wanted to do was provide that, that answer. I was asked those questions, so I hope that answers the question. If not, I'd be more than happy to either take more questions or I can expand the report for next month.
I have one numbered question. FY nineteen, can you give me the numbers for the school, for the total, on those students again?
FY nineteen for elementary-
One fifteen.
Was one fifteen. FY nineteen for middle was ninety-nine. FY nineteen for high was ninety-four.
Ninety-four. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Any other questions on this report?
No, I got a few. Okay, um, does, does a student, the ones with the high numbers, do they start in kindergarten and go all the way through twelfth grade? I mean, is it just like-
That's just that year?
No, okay, so if you track the first, a child when they started kindergarten and they have a lot of issues, events, are they the same one in twelfth grade with a lot of events?
I did track it that way, but from experience, usually they continue to have, have an issue. Uh, whether they're supported at the house, whether they have other issues that is causing them to act out, it usually causes them to continue to do that and we work with that same group year after year after year. No different than a police department does.
Okay, so I guess that's how my next question, what we can do to lower those numbers.
And that's just part of our counselors working with them, our principals working with them, trying to work with the parents, trying to guide them through what they need to do. A number of them improve without a question of a doubt. I would be fibbing if I didn't say that. But yes, sometimes they continue to cause those problems. Some of them mature and end up becoming wonderful children and great to be around. It just, that's part of being in education. You try and make them mature and grow up the way we want them to be. That's part of working on that. And these offenses are extremely small, thank God. We're not dealing with a whole lot of children. We're not dealing with horrendous offenses either.
I do, I do like what you did, done here. Is there a way that you could do like a chart that has a comparison year by year on the same one to see if there's actually, where you can actually use that data? I mean, I don't know if y'all use that data in your weekly, monthly meetings or-
I, I know that quite frequently as we're talking about an individual that travels from elementary to middle to high. And I remember it more when Ms. Arthur would transfer children to Dr. Gumby. There was always a, a, it was a ribbon, there was a balloon. I'm thinking of the couple of kids that were very specifically pointed out and identified. One of the advantages of being a middle school, high school in the same building, the principals get to know them before they ever get to high school, so it's not a brand-new student to them. Coming from the elementary over to the middle school, they talk. And that's part of that vertical teaming as well, the fifth grade talking with the sixth grade teachers and, and group. So that's all part of the advantage of being small. If you were coming from three different middle schools into one high school, that doesn't happen. So yes, we do communicate and I think we do it pretty well.
So there is hope for some of these students to have opportunities.
There, there definitely is, and if there wasn't hope for them, we would be in the wrong business.
I mean, I feel like it is with our staff.
Yes, absolutely.
Teachers and principals and-
Yes.
But just to be clear, you're saying we cannot do paddlings? We would, they, our teachers would not be covered under the insurance?
We, we can do it, but we would not be covered through insurance is what the interpretation was from the insurance company. And our, our employee that does it could be liable either criminally or civilly or both, according to our attorney. Which is why I don't want to PBIS.
So I have a question.
Sure.
So looking at classroom disruption.
Yes, sir.
You have outside, I understand the NS. But we have classroom disruption outside, classroom disruption L-one, classroom disruption NS. What's the difference in the outside and not? And then you have classroom disruption outside L-one. So we have four different categories there. How, what's outside versus just regular disruption?
Ms. Arthur, you wanna answer that one? You'll probably do better than I would.
Um, outs, I'll take this, I'll read it for me. The NS means not state-reportable, so you might have something go on in the classroom that's just minor. And the teacher writes it up. It's not reported to the state. If outside, um, the classroom, you maybe you're in transition from one place to another. Um, you know, and they have something go on. At the middle school, it could be, um, when they're on the bus traveling to a ball, you know, somewhere-
So outside just means outside, basically the full walls of the classroom?
Right.
Okay, alright, that's, that's what I wanted to know as far-
Same group.
Like on playground?
Yes.
So-
And L-one, L-one means that you have a state-reportable. So state-reportable means you have an ISS assignment. They have three sat, at least three Saturday schools assigned, assigned to them or at least three ASIs. Those are considered state-reportable. Anything below that, you do not have to, it's considered non-state-reportable. You have one ASI or silent lunch or even one Saturday school is non-state-reportable that we can put in as an NS. But anything that you see that is L-one, L-two, those are things that are state-reportable.
So to follow that, if I can, so to follow that in disruption, basic classroom disruption, how many Ls do we have would be my second? Cause you said a L-one and a L-two. I mean-
How many level?
Yeah, how many, is, is there a state?
There's a matrix. We have a matrix. It's not, um, put out by the state. It's just something that we use as guidance.
Okay.
Well, we do have a state matrix too.
Yeah, but it's, it's the same. It was created by, someone that was here. It was created by Dr. Campbell. But it's, it's guidance for us, you know, so, cause you wanna make sure that when you have problems, that you're consistent. Um, and it helps us, you know, a level one is this. We have descriptions. You can actually see the matrix if you want to. It's, it's got the description of what a classroom disruption is, what the different levels are. It suggests different types of punishment, but we as an administrator can adjust that depending upon the situation. But it is, you know, some guidance for us. Um, you know, I don't have Saturday school. I don't have all of that, but we do have some, we have a behavior room and which is like our ISS. Um, and we do have a school, but we don't have Saturday school, so.
I just got the latest ones also. I can make copies and bring them to y'all. Thanks, Tom. If you want of those state majors, the definition and all that, the one that came out last year, I think. What about theirs?
Okay, I would, please.
I'll, I'll add.
Yes, sir.
Is there any way to suspend the seven, eight students that are causing all the problems for a week or so after New Year's time? Send them home? Let the parents deal with them?
Well, and, and if they, as they continue to accumulate within the same year excessive referrals, we can put them in alternative school. Yes, sir, and we do that as necessary.
How do alternatives go? Home?
Well, home is not always successful, but yes, if they get to that point, yes, we can do that, absolutely.
I do, I just want, you know-
Yes, sir, we can do that.
I've seen kids that'd rather be in ISS than regular school.
Well, and there's some kids that'd rather be home than in school and they're not learning anything at home, unfortunately, cause they're on their own. We need them in school learning something.
Any other questions or comments on, on this?
So, so as a group, whole group, is everybody pretty satisfied with the numbers as far as discipline? Are any issues would get better at them or?
Our numbers are way down this year, way down. And if you look at that chart right there, this there, you have to look at the, um, scale. Like I told, that's what I just told him. I said, "Your numbers look a whole lot better than mine," but his scale is different than mine. Like that's counting by twenties. My scale, my scale counted by fives and twos. So you have to, you can't just look and see that there's just, you know, that the bars are little.
I'd like to see a comparison by each year, like, you know, I don't know how, you know how to do bar graph. Three years, all in one and you can see if you're doing a lot worse or better.
Right. I, I actually, I sent Dr. Light, he can share with them.
We can convert that.
I don't mind.
Yeah, we can convert that.
I think from two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, you know, all that. So he can share that with you.
And one of the, you'll see those trends too. So if she's got a bad fifth grade group, they'll be bad six, seven, eight, nine, ten. You can go all the way back and they're gonna be very similar. And they, they travel in packs.
But I don't want you to think also that we don't have something in place for those children. I mean, we do. We have, um, we have RTI Behavior Program where if a child is, um, continuing to misbehave, then we have something that we put them on and we, there are steps that we go through for that child to, to make sure that we're trying to correct that behavior before they get to alternative school. And so for some children, it works fine and they, they get the help they need and they understand they've gotta straighten up and other children go to alternative school, um, because they don't straighten up.
And I'd like to comment on that, if you don't, if you don't mind. I think as administrators, faculty, everything, I think we're doing a great job. I'm not saying that. So I don't want you, this is not offensive. I want the faculty to know that, for me being up here, that we're wanting to support y'all as far as furthering the educa, education in the best way we can. And we, you know, and reducing all of this. So that's why I was willing to look into this and make sure we do have the best plan in place. So I just wanna let y'all know.
I appreciate you looking into it. We do appreciate that. I, I, I wish you could see the numbers side by side from last year to this year because they're just tremendously different from last year to this year.
And that's ditto for me. We, we want y'all to have all the tools you need to make these students better to be successful when they leave high school. That's what this is about, I think.
That's correct. There's a matrix he was talking about, right there. That's the matrix. Now, again, that, it, Michael, span to the left real quick. I think that's one of the areas we were talking about earlier. There you go. Academic dishonesty, that's not it. Keep going down. I was looking for the one on, uh, classroom disruption.
It's the alphabet.
There it is. There's your levels, one, two, three. Minor classroom disruption that includes not following classroom behavior matrix rules. Major classroom disruption that stops instruction for an extended period of time and requires administrative intervention. Number three, a pattern of major disruptions during the same school year. Documentation of tier one through three interventions implemented in effectiveness. Now, this is guidance. This is not etched in stone. If somebody has a, a major disruption and causes a huge problem, it doesn't, you don't send them right back and say, "He's gotta do three more." We don't play that game here. We don't accept it. We don't allow it. This is simply for guidance to help follow them along and keep them consistent. But I, when I walked in the door, that was one of the first complaints, is why do we have to go through these steps? You don't. You're the principal. You're in charge. Make your building as great as it can be and that's what it's all about. And I've done that since I walked in the door. We're very blessed with exceptional educators and exceptional administrators. We're very blessed. And I appreciate you guys wanting to, to support them in every way we can to make them even better.
And if I might, Dr. Light, um, some of the children that have those chronic behaviors, we have a partnership with Serenity Behavioral Health Center and they come into my building. You know, because we can, you can tell, you know, when they start having all these issues that there's something else causing it. The children don't just act out like that. And so we have a partnership with them. It's a counseling service, um, and they work with the families. Um, the families, you know, go to sessions, the kids go to sessions, um, they do home visits. Um, and you know, we, that just recently started a couple, a few years ago, so that helps. Um, so, and it turns some around and some it doesn't. But we do offer that now, which we didn't have any mental health, help at all until recently. And they are allowed to come into the school.
But all this came up because of the incident on the bus where the bus driver got fired. For somebody that continuously acted up on the bus. That's why we got to ask about all this.
Well, that child had not been written up that many times, um, so, and that's the thing. You know, you've got to be consistent and you've got to, if you have problems, then let them know, you know, and write it up and, and we'll deal with it. Um, yes, you know, I mean, we get on the buses. I got on the bus today. And got children to settle down and all. It's, it's, it's hard for bus drivers to drive down the road and have all that going on in the back, um, behind them. It's not an easy job. I told them I would not want it. I do any job we have in the school. Um, and the, you know, and part of it too, I, and Dr. Light talked to me about it today. It's, um, we have cameras on some of the buses, but they're not in good condition, but he's, well, they've ordered. How many did you tell me, Dr. Light? I forgot.
I believe it was thirteen that we ordered.
To replace some of the ones that aren't working. Um, so you can actually see, you know, what's, what's going on. To replace some of the ones that aren't working, um, so you can actually see, you know, what's, what's going on. So, you know, you, it, you have, we have to know that all this is going on. You know, you have to, if discipline is bad on the bus, and I can promise you, I have a bus driver that brought me nine last week. Um, so some bus drivers write up children when they misbehave and some don't. Some try to deal with it.
You're gonna probably have more since this happened, I would think.
Probably not, because he's going, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm not saying anything bad about Mr. Lambert. I think he's a wonderful person.
I'm just saying other bus drivers, they're not going.
Yeah, well.
Try correcting, they're going to write them up, I would think now, maybe I'm wrong.
Well, they're much like a teacher too. Your good, your good bus drivers will call that parent first, or they'll know that.
Yeah, but if a man almost lost his job, I think they'll think twice about, you know, getting on.
As the, as administrators, do you think you, with what we have in place for you, do you think you have the tools? And your teachers have the tools so that they can do their primary job of teaching?
I do.
And that's, that's our, I mean, that's our biggest goal.
I have so.
You know, so that you don't, that we can deal with that disruptive student in a manner that he doesn't keep everyone else from learning.
And I will say, um, I can't remember how many years ago, it's, it's been many years ago. Um, I was still at the middle school as assistant principal. Um, at the beginning of the year, the assistant principals would meet with the bus drivers. And we would talk to them, you know, about, okay, you got this set of rules. You've got this set of rules, you know, be consistent, that kind of thing. And just, you know, offer them some suggestions, because they, you know, they, yes, they deal with kids and, and I, listen, I tell you, I applaud them. I ride the bus when we have lots of issues. And of course, if I'm on the bus, what's going to happen? Everyone's going to stay in their seat. Everyone's going to do what they're supposed to do. But I can't ride the bus every day, and they have a hard job. It is hard to focus and drive when you've got children misbehaving. And a lot of times, you know, they'll tell me, but I don't really know which child it was because there's thirty-nine kids on my bus. Um, I just know paperball, you know, flying, whatever, and we get on the bus, we address it. But we used to have at the beginning of the year, just a meeting with the transportation director. And we would just meet with the bus drivers, what can we do to help you, you know, um, these are some suggestions. If you have this set of rules, then you keep that set of rules. If you have a seating chart, then they sit in that seat. You know, just, just kind of help them and let them have a voice and talk to us, and that might not be a bad, um, the, you know, suggestion.
We did it this year, remember? We did it this year.
Yeah, when we talked about the seating chart, yes.
Yeah, we sure did.
We did, we met with them about the, um, COVID and contact tracing and the seating charts. But as far as the discipline and that kind of thing, so.
Here's one more question. So I heard several different disciplinary actions. It used to be, do we have any kind of after-school disciplinary actions? Like it used to be detention, I guess is what it was called, that I remember.
ASI is what I was referring to.
ASI.
ASI in middle school.
We have after-school detention, which is thirty minutes, ASI, which is two hours, then we have Saturday school, which is four hours.
Say that one more time, please.
We have, um, after-school detention, which is thirty minutes, ASI, which is two hours.
After-school?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Saturday school, which is four hours on Saturday.
And then if that happens, the parent's responsible for picking up that child and making sure transportation is provided by the parents and all that, right?
Yes.
And on the bus, you know, when a student gets a referral the first time, you contact the parents, we conference with them, and if they get another one, that's a day off the bus. And it counts as a suspension. The next time, they get more days off the bus. So, um, you know, and, um, that's just kind of.
And we're pretty consistent with that with all three schools, you would feel like?
Yeah, I, I don't have ASI detention and stuff, but, um, yes, sir, I don't think so.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
You don't want me to have, but.
You don't give me that chart.
Yes, sir, I will. I have to create it, but yes, sir, I'll get you that chart.
Yes, sir.
I'll share it with everybody. I want you to share it with you.
And next on our agenda is policies for review.
Okay, policy BCBI, Public Participation Board Meeting. Policy BE, School Board Records. Policy GBBA, Qualifications and Duties. Policy JJ, GCAA, Validation of Interest Age. Policy JJ, Employment of Students. And Policy MI, Relations of Other Agencies are all for review. They don't need to be changed. As you look at Policy IBG, we are making a very small adjustment to IBG. On page two, in the very back, each school shall have a minimum of one SST RTI and shall establish support team procedures. In other words, an RTI team or SST team. That was the only adjustment to that one. And as always, that would lay on the table for thirty days for recommendation, and then we'll come back next month for board approval.
Next on our agenda is superintendent's reports and informational items.
Jason and I were lucky enough to be included in a GSBA, um, conversation with our District Eleven Leader and Julie Rom from, uh, GSBA. And we talked about a, a lot of things that day on our, our Zoom meeting. But one of the things that she supplied us with was governance team operating and norms and protocols. Now, this is something that we'll definitely have a chance to review during the May board, full board training, if the board likes. But this is something that GSBA is, is pushing this year and wants to share with everybody. So we were lucky enough to get a copy of it early because of our meeting. And I just wanted to put it out there, share it, ask you to review it. If you've already reviewed it, would you like to discuss it now, or would you like to bring it back up at another time? But it basically identifies the different domains, the different structures, and how we as a board can move forward from being operational to distinguished to exceptional. And in the past, that wasn't possible, because one of the first things that was required is everybody attend full board training. And that just wasn't possible before. Today, I believe it will be, and going forward, I believe it will be. So hopefully, we'll be able to move up those tiers and be able to come exemplary. I truly think this board is exemplary, but that was one of the stepping stones that we couldn't do before. This provides those domains. It gives you an idea of what's in here. It helps you understand what GSBA thinks is the right way to do it. Now, as a local board, we have total control to adjust these things. But this is in their mind, their matrix of what to follow. Some really good stuff in here.
And this, this is a protocol. This is not a policy. So it's a, it's a protocol that would be agreed to by the members of the board. And, and this, this example has way more than, than I think needs to be truly in it. But the simple things, you know, from a matter of discussion, from a matter of communications, how you expect, uh, you know, there's, there's a section there about visiting schools. Um, things that, you know, what they say is common sense, but it would be good to have it as just a board norm. Things that you, that you should do, ways you should do things, ways you shouldn't. And, um, and, and well, like I said, what I'd like, like for us to do is, you know, just kind of, maybe you can print one of these out and kind of go through and mark things if you like, you think. And in that May meeting, I mean, that's, that's part of what we can, we'll do in that training. If we decide that that's something we want to do, that, that can be part of our, you know, whole board training. Is that we decide, yes, you know, I think these would be good ways of handling social media, or, you know, handling board attendance, handling emails, uh, school visits, you know, things of that nature. And so that's, like you said, we, we looked into it in the past, but we were just not able to do it together as a board. Um, but I think it would be very good for our board to do.
Would you end up making something like this a policy?
No, it would still be just a board norm. Yeah, I mean, that would, that's, that's the purpose of it. It, um, you, could it be a policy? That's something we'd have to ask on GSBA, um, but it's more of just norms and practices.
Procedural guidelines is one of the words she used.
Yeah.
This is summary of what we were taught.
Yes, sir.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, true.
But if you don't do it, there's not a whole lot you can do about it, is there, Jason?
How long has it been at?
What's that?
This summary?
Well, no, I mean, this is, some boards have had, you know, they've done this for years.
We went to training, a, a lot of that was.
Yes, sir.
That was the whole thing.
Yes, sir.
All of it.
And at Savannah meeting, they recognized the board as a whole.
Correct. And that, that's what I'm talking about, to get us to, to move up those tiers, and that, I think that would be very necessary for us to do that because of the hard work that you guys put in, and, and that was stalemate it. And I'm just going to leave it at that.
Yeah, if you could just start looking through some, and there may be some things that you think should be added. And, you know, and that's, that's the kind of things we'll go through and just discuss. The next thing is COVID-nineteen updates.
Just trying to, to stay consistent, I know that the board is probably tired of hearing about COVID, but I want you to always see the numbers in front of you. As you look at employees for March, again, this is just up to March ninth, so it's just today. Two direct exposures for employees. Go all the way over to the high school, because everybody else was zero. Seventeen at the high school and one positive. Our total number of positives, you can see down there at the bottom, and our total number of student direct exposures. So our numbers are low. We're very, very blessed. We still ask our parents, if a child is sick, please keep them home. Please make sure that they stay home, whether it's coronavirus, or whether it's a cold or the flu. We don't need it at school, so please keep them home.
I would assume by looking at March, that was one student in one classroom that affected seventeen other kids.
That is correct, and that's usually how it works, unfortunately.
So other than that, we would have been zeros across the board without one student.
Would have been. Today, we got one more, so. Every day continues.
February looked pretty bad. Like January looked worse.
January was coming back from Christmas, unfortunately, and that's what hit us in the, in the nose there. December, we got hit in the nose with, uh, Thanksgiving. February was a ski trip, and here we are in March.
We're going to be all Friday.
Yes, sir. I'm more worried about spring break, to be honest.
Yeah.
Spring break scares me.
Yeah.
It really does. I've got a couple more things, if that's all right, if I can move forward. At your table, you've got a certificate in front of you. The Governor Annually, I don't want to remove this so that you can hear me better. The Governor Annually Identifies School Board Appreciation Week. A proclamation, whereas educating our children is the key to our state's continued prosperity and to open the doors of opportunity for every citizen. And whereas Georgia Continues Growth requires dedication to excellence in our schools and commitment to providing trained teachers and needed tools and resources to all schools. And whereas Georgia Boards of Education work together with the school system they lead, parents and community leaders to set a vision of their district in which students can learn and become productive contributors to our society. And whereas the men and women serve on school boards in communities across Georgia have demonstrated a strong commitment to quality and public education by securing adequate resources, promoting academic standards, and fostering partnership within the community. And again, that is signed by our Governor Brian Kemp. I can promise you, for anybody that is watching this or that doesn't know, a school board member does not do their job for the money. It is extremely low. They do it because they love kids, and they do it to try and make a difference. We have five great ones, and I want to thank all of them for being here. I want to thank all of them for continuing to serve, and it's not an easy job. It's really not. And there's, there's not a whole lot of positives out of it, but I thank you all for being here. There is a certificate there. These are obviously from GSBA, and you've got a little note from GSBA. All for, uh, School Board Appreciation Week, which is next week, the fifteenth through the nineteenth. So call your board member and tell them thank you for a change. Two more things, um. Ms. Arthur?
Yes, sir.
Elizabeth Arthur?
Yes, sir.
Was on the news tonight at five-thirty. She got Channel Six's Golden Apple. If you didn't get to see that, it was very well done. Um, they congratulated her. Unfortunately, they didn't allow them to go into the school to film the hallway. If you've never been in the pre-K hallway down there, the decoration down there is unbelievable. The idea is a child is coming into a particular theme. They've done an underwater theme. They've done dinosaurs. They've done all kinds of amazing things. They're truly artists. They do a great job. And, and when you get a chance, I'd love for everybody to walk through that, because they do an awesome job for those little ones. And Elizabeth Arthur deserves all the accolades she can get, and there you go. She was on today. Now, next Tuesday, Carrie Ball was also recognized with the Golden Apple Award, and she'll be on television next Tuesday. So our, our district has had two back-to-back Golden Apples this week and next week. So I want to congratulate them and thank them for doing a super job, because our, our kids do a good job, but we need great teachers, and we have them, and we're very blessed.
Thank you.
Good job.
That's all I have, sir.
Okay, uh, we need a motion to move into executive session.
Go in executive session.
Parks down, second by. We'll call our meeting back to order. The superintendent has recommended the following Link County Elementary School teachers for contracts for fiscal year twenty-two. I make a motion that we accept all the names listed.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Madison. All in favor? unanimous? Superintendent has recommended, I make a motion that we accept the names listed on this for the Link County Middle School and offer them a contract for the fiscal year twenty-two. You have a second?
Second, I'm sorry, you go.
All in favor? Second by.
Except for Ms. Madison, I'm always staying from that one.
The superintendent.
He would vote for his mom.
Superintendent has recommended the following contracts for the Link County High School, and I make a motion to accept his recommendation. You have a second by Ms. Parksdale. All in favor? unanimous? Superintendent has recommended the following administrators for contracts for the fiscal year twenty-two, and I make a motion to accept his recommendation. You have a second by Mr. Reese. All in favor? unanimous? Superintendent has recommended, I make a motion that we accept the retirement of Ms. Heather Riley effective May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. A second by Mr. Hyman. All in favor? unanimous? Superintendent has recommended, and I make a motion that we hire Ms. Mary Wideman as a substitute bus driver for year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. You have a second by Ms. Parksdale. All in favor? unanimous? Superintendent has recommended, and I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Parker Martin effective March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. A second by Mr. Madison. All in favor? unanimous? Superintendent has recommended, I make a motion that we hire Mr. Elridge Nguyen as a substitute teacher for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. Second by Ms. Parksdale. All in favor? unanimous? Anything else?
Make a motion.
I have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Hyman, second by Ms. Parksdale. Thank you.